...
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Here.
Mr. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. Law?
Yes.
Mrs. Morris?
Yes.
Mr. Nelson?
Here.
First order of business, student staff recognition. Mr. Baker, you're up.
Good evening. I guess I'm gonna start with my staff recognition today. I'd like to recognize Mrs. Monroe. Last week, we did a student recognition banquet, organized a whole bunch of awards for students who attended academics. Good behavior by our students, we wanted to recognize those students. Mrs. Monroe organized that whole project, got the teachers on board to write the certificates, and then organize the state presentation. Unfortunately, we did have some technical issues, and we didn't have mic system on staff and everything. So I'd like to recognize Mrs. Monroe as our staff member one. (APPLAUSE). Part of that recognition, every year, traditionally, we have a what we call Mr. Bearcat and Mrs. Bearcat for each grade. Those are students that stand out to our staff and really demonstrate the values that we value in our students, both academics and major, and just being supportive of their fellow classmates, supportive of the system. And we have two eighth graders that I want to recognize tonight. Unfortunately, one of them couldn't make it with us. That would be Jonathan Castle. He was a major eighth grader and a career path. He's a wonderful young man. You see him a lot in the community, working for bandits and stuff like that. He's always clean enough, he's loyal, and he's helping out at the sporting events and stuff with his parents. And our Mrs. Beecher, Mrs. Bearcat, who is equally has a fourth. She's an outstanding student in school, she participates in a lot of sports for us, and is a student that we love having represent in our school system. And that is Sheila Sanders.[192.12][192.12](APPLAUSE). And that's going to be after Bridgeport Musing tonight.[215.12][215.12](APPLAUSE).
Mr. Baker, I was contacted by the Castles at about five o'clock. I knew Jonathan wasn't gonna be here, he said, "Give me the certificate to help me."
Will do.
Mr. Lang, you're up.
All right. Hello, everyone. Good evening. Susan Duran from Thomas White and Atkins Elementary. To start off with, I'd like to announce the Students of the Month from Thomas White. We have Adriana Seewell. Adriana, come on out. Adriana...[275.83][275.83](APPLAUSE). Adriana Debbel, come on. Adriana, your time from Softball Tonight to join us. And Adriana is from Ms. Morrison's classroom. And here's Ms. Morrison, well ironically...
She's really not this shy.
She's shy tonight. Ms. Adriana is from Ms. Morrison's classroom. She's always kind and helpful. Adriana is a rock star reader and all-around good student. How about we give a round of applause to her? Well, as it is, Ms. Morrison is our Teacher of the Month from Thomas White, so we have a doubleheader here tonight. Ms. Morrison is also kind and is always willing to help out her fellow staff members. She will step up to get things done whenever needed. I think we just saw an example of that. She's loved by our students and appreciated by her fellow teachers. Thank you, Ms. Morrison. All right. For Atkins, I don't see our Student of the Month sitting here. Well, we have Sidney Dunkley. Sidney Dunkley is from Ms. Dooley's room. She's a hard worker for our school. Sidney is always helpful, and she's an excellent reader who loves both science and social studies. I will make sure, Dunkley made sure that Sidney gets her award, but also tonight, in recognition of Teacher of the Month at Atkins, we have Rose. Rose has a lot of energy. Come on, Mrs. Rose. She is a helpful resource for everyone. She works tirelessly to support the learning of all students with patience and kindness. Thank you for your service.
Yeah, they got that table too far out there.
Mr. McCarthy. Next order of business, citizen participation. Mr. Ryans.
Good evening. For the past ten months, I've brought questions and concerns to the podium and to all individual board members in hopes of answers. Tonight, I'd like to bring to your attention a couple of events that took place last week following a personnel committee meeting. After hearing that there was an unposted meeting, I found out it was recorded and posted on Bridgeport Musing blog and YouTube. When watching this video, I witnessed yet another meeting where a board member expressed a display of unacceptable behavior and in extreme verbal actions towards staff and fellow board members. That fits the description of bullying. In the beginning of the meeting, Mrs. Sagman stated that she personally contacted employees of the district that told her that they were not happy that their names were brought up on YouTube. She stated that she received phone calls from two employees after their names were mentioned in the April 17th personnel meeting. I have since watched that video and have compiled a list of names of every employee mentioned at that meeting. Excuse me. Every one of those employees told me that it was false information and that Ms. Sagman never contacted any of them, thus proving that her story was fabricated and that her statement was just another way of bullying. After watching the video Monday night, I again sent Ms. Sagman an email, and I'm gonna read the email that I sent to her. "Marty, I just watched your ridiculous actions on YouTube." Yes, YouTube. "You need to leave your legacy, if you still have one, the way you think it is before it is tarnished further. It is very obvious that you feel the need to continue to be a bully and that you have something personal against certain people in this district. It would be in your best interest to resign from the board. Your actions are about to get you in serious trouble. Please resign your seat at Monday night's meeting." Sorry, let me get motion. Tuesday, I was contacted by the police chief of Bridgeport Township Police Department, Chief Duffett. He stated that he needed to question me about a complaint that was made against me by Mrs. Sagman. He stated that Mrs. Sagman feels I place a threat to her based on the email that I sent that prior evening. He asked me if I meant any physical harm to Mrs. Sagman. I replied, "Absolutely not." What I was referring to was the potential lawsuit that could be filed against her and this district for her actions and behavior. He also said, "Mrs. Sagman stated that I scare her when I stare at her during meetings and ask her to resign." Chief Duffett advised Sagman that he could not prevent me from staring at her at meetings and that she is an elected official by the public, and the public has the right to ask her to resign. He told Sagman that he did not believe that there were any criminal intent and advised her that it was a civil matter and the case was closed. I feel her filing this police report is an attempt to bully me to go away, just like she has done to many other citizens and former board members over the years. Her actions by filing this report have crossed the line, and I am not going to tolerate her bullying me any further. As per the anti-bullying policy, policy number 8260 is developed by the state and the MCO, code 3801310B, I will be filing a formal bullying prevention intervention incident form and submitting it to the ISD, the MASB, the MDE, local senators, the Michigan Attorney's General's Office, the Lieutenant Governor's Office, the Governor's Office, and many of our local media outlets in the area. I will not allow her to force me from my involvement in this community in the way she has forced many of the administration, staff, and fellow board members from this district over the years. In closing, I would like to state, I have never realized that I stared at her in meetings. It must be that I am amazed by her actions during them and that I am drawn to her ridiculous behavior. I will, however, continue to ask for her resignation as a board, as a board member, and continue to hold her accountable and all board members accountable for the actions that they are expected to do for our district in the best interest of our students. Thank you.
Zachary Poldyak.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Zachary Poldyak. I am a 2006 graduate of Bridgeport High School. I come here tonight to raise some questions to the board in regards to what has happened over the past nine years since I've been here. I'd like to show some grades that I found on the internet about our district. Gradeschools.com gives it a two out of 10. Education.com gives it a four out of 10. K-12Nish.com gives it a C minus, and SchoolDigger.com gives it a zero out of five. Now, these may not all be credible sites, but it is a common statistic that it is less than 50% favorable. During my time at Bridgeport High School, I was voted most school spirit. If anybody's ever attended a basketball game between 2006 and 2011, there was a red tape that students wore. I started that and passed it down. Following my graduation in 2006, I received a call in January 2007 from Desmond Daniels, superintendent of the time here. He called to follow up to see how I was doing after my high school career. He said that if I never needed anything at all, that I could just call him. That type of person with such compassion is hard to find. With that being said, in an article on MLive on February 23rd, 2009, Mr. Darrell Thayer states that he was quitting, stepping down from his position on the school board because of allegations of bullying made by Mrs. Martha Sagman to Mr. Desmond Daniels. Now, Mr. Desmond Daniels was also a principal when I was in middle school and kind of watched us grow up, and that hurts. That hurts to see such an awesome person being pushed out of a great position. Now, let's think back to this year. If you ask any teacher of any subject, they'll tell you that research is the best tool to become knowledgeable about any topic. Research. Where was the lack of research when Mr. Hill was hired? Whereas, what can we do to fix that? All it took was a simple report to figure out what this guy was. Not to mention at the beginning of the year, what this guy brought to this school was hardship. These students, these seniors, this past year, not only worrying about what they had to do after they graduated high school, they had to worry about if they were even going to graduate high school with the conditions that were made at the beginning of the year. So I ask you, as the board, what steps are we going to take to better this school district? What are we gonna do to make sure that we don't repeat these mishaps? Because now is the time. Now is the time. I bled red and yellow when I was in school, and I still bleed red and yellow. Go Bearcats.
Mr. Morrison.
Good evening, Bridgeport Spawling School Board. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak to you. I arrived and I read the article recently in the Burge Run Herald. And if there's a thread of truth in them articles about Mrs. Sagman, then my question is, why is she still sitting up there on this school board? She ought to have, she ought to resign. I agree with this young man, she should have done it weeks ago. However, that didn't happen, and she's still an embarrassment, in my opinion, to this school board and to the Bridgeport community. I've talked to former school board members, and they all agree that the biggest problem with this school board over the last 10 years has stuck there with the red shirt on, Mrs. Sagman. She has caused more problems and more dissension in this school district than any 10 people. It would be my request also that she resign from this school board ASAP, or the school board takes appropriate action to remove her. Also, if what was said in that newspaper article is true, that there's $38,000 that was spent without the board approval, then I would ask why there hasn't been some charges brought and why this board hasn't taken some action to remedy that problem. If, in fact, she spent $38,000 without this board approval, then there's two things that ought to happen. One, she ought to repay the money, and number two, there ought to be charges brought against this lady. And I've been a member of this community since, for 65 years, and I've seen an awful lot of school boards. And we've had some great ones, and there's some great people on this school board. I have all the respect in the world for you, Mr. Brown, and Mr. Nelson, and Mr. Lang, and Mr. Morris, and some of the other ones, I don't know that well. However, I think it's your responsibility of the school board to take the appropriate actions to remove Sagman soon as possible. Thank you.
Committee reports. Billy and Drew, finance. Mr. Law?
Okay, we left on 4:30, 9:51. Mr. Nelson and myself, the president of the, Selby, Dean, Pete, Facilie, Jeff, and Al Feldman. Personnel committee was reviewing the check register. We had a few questions that we didn't get answers to. We found out that we're gonna have a funding level increase from the state, approximately under $50 per student for next year, 2015, '16. Mr. Facilie explained that new transparency reporting requirements that we'll take effect this fall, which include reporting district credit cards, reporting all district pay dollars, and state travel. Key Melissa also discussed payroll services being provided by the brash ISD. A proposal is being developed to transition to Skyworth for accounting activity and the transition payroll and GL to SAG on ISD. The proposal may also include transition 19 services at that time. Student activity accounts were discussed. Melissa explained that these funds may not be banked for future use. The funds need to be used by the respective graduating class. Melissa also explained that the class could use surplus funds for a special class project if desired. If not used, they are not used, they are passed on to the next class. Miss Selby is going to be giving me kind of a wish list for the 2014 class because they have a large sum that they meet and come up with a project moving forward for that. Mr. Feldman then discussed cost-saving measures. He's transitioning the seventh and eighth grade football to the Bridgeport Park and Recs department. This will save between $4,000 and $5,000. He's also looking at coaching levels and is working with administration to ensure pay to play is administered properly moving forward. The value of the school resource officer was discussed, and we do have a desire to renew the contract, and do have a recommendation below to do so. Senator Brown's buildings, the Jeff Ladd provided an update on the ongoing projects, mostly drunk house, was discussed with interest. Still showing that SAG on ISD, our head stud administration, will approach the ISD to discuss purchase options. So that we're gonna be looking forward to move in the next couple of weeks. We also discussed modifying summer hours to allow for buildings to be closed on Fridays as a cost-saving measure. Employees would work a four-to-10 hour schedule, and administration will address this. As I mentioned earlier, we are going to make a recommendation from this committee to renew the resource officer contract at Bridgeport Township. We adjourn the meeting at 5:30, and we've made no scheduled meeting time for July unless needed. We will meet again in early August.
All settled, Larry?
Yes.
I have one question. Maybe I missed this earlier, but I'm not sure. Sensible provides computer services. They service the district for computers and internet. They do all our auto services. So that was a good comparison. Right, they are very responsible for white people. They've been open in this district for probably the last five years. Probably gonna look at that cost and tell them, see if we can even bring it down to some.
Mr. Law, can I just give a couple of updates to this report, just so there's no misunderstanding by the board? We discussed going to a 14 schedule for the summer, but found out that it really gonna contradict with some of the summer school activities this year that have been worked towards moving in that direction for the year. They want a chance to plan for food service, providing, feeding students' children outside of the district during the summer. And we have summer school at the elementary, the elementary school, so it's not gonna really work out the way we have envisioned for this year.
So we do have people on the buildings on Fridays?
Yes, not every Friday, but some Friday. Now, the custodians still may work out a schedule. We don't have any summer school activities going on that day, the 14th, every, every week. But if you shut down a complete, the district completely, like that on the summer, on Friday, it's not gonna be feasible this year. And number two, the funding level, it actually says that we're getting $150 per student, but that because the state gives it or the state takes it away, the net increase will be $100, unfortunately, not. We're hoping that that will increase because the state is, it's still making decisions to their budget and increase funding for special program.
Well, we know it's between 70 and 150.
Well, the net, 140 was the gross. They took away the best practice, it was $50, so that's 90. We're getting also $64 for adverse funding, but that's targeted for adverse students, so general fund is 90, adverse would be about 64. Overall? The total, yes, but it's not, this, I just didn't want that to... Adverse is restricted to adverse students.
Mr. Brown, front of ours, I can hear you. Personnel, Mr. Nelson, you're up. What are you doing, Mr. F? I'm not sure if all got here either, but it's there.
And of course, I'm not the chairperson of the personnel committee either, the Sagman is, but for whatever reason, she didn't do notes, and so I have some, and please feel free to jump in, those of you who were at the meeting. We talked about staffing for next year, and I let the committee members know that the administrators will be meeting on that same day in the afternoon to discuss staffing for next year. A big push was to make sure that we maximize our grant funding as much as possible to use for staffing when we could. And we did realize that there are some additional staff members that we could be funded out of Title I and the 31 hang, and we'll get more information hopefully before June 30th. There was a discussion about discrepancies in the salary differences between the building administrators in each level. There was no request to make any changes at this time, but it's something that will have to be pondered over by the...
have to be pondered over by the finance committee. Athletic staffing, and that was talked about at the finance committee too, the cost of athletic programs, and we were going to try to reduce staffing, and Mr. Feldman came up with an idea to reduce some of the staffing for the athletic program. The renewal of acting superintendent Selby's contract was discussed because Mr. Hill has resigned. After the discussion, two of the board members supported the contract renewal. Mrs. Sageman abstained. And then finally, this wasn't a part of the committee, but it came afterwards, the renewal of the secretary's contract, this is just the two secretaries that work in the main office, and you got an email on this, and this is the renewal of Robin Dow and Pat Mottfire, who are not in the secretary's unit, they're not in any unit, correct? And Ms. Johnson really could give you more explanation on this, but they're on a year-to-year contract, they're not working in a buyer unit, and the contracts expired in thirtieth, and we hope that they will renew. And if you have any questions, because it sounds like you have some questions regarding those contracts and how they got to be and why they're different, and then Johnson could answer. Any questions you may have?
Well, I think the first thing we need to do is we need to discuss the superintendent's contract. I specifically asked the superintendent to put it on the agenda for tonight. I want a full board input, a full board discussion, reference the superintendent. It didn't get put on the agenda, and I don't know why.
It's like, uh, personnel.
Doesn't have to come out of committee. It can come to the full board, and I want everybody's input and to make this decision. It's not coming out of committee for two members or three members to make a discussion. It's up to everybody up here, what we're going to do with you. And I specifically asked you to put it on the agenda so we could discuss it in the meeting tonight, and I failed to be on the agenda. I know there is a recommendation out of committee. I don't know if that's going to get any support or how we're going to handle it, but we need to discuss the superintendent's contract.
Are you looking just for each of us to go down the road and provide your input?
I, I, that's what I would like. I'd like everybody's input, how they want, what they want to do. I know I have heard discussion of a, of a two-year contract. I have heard that. I guess we'll start with Mr. Lang.
Before we start with Mr. Lang, can we hear the rationale for a two-year contract from Melissa or?
Well, cost savings, state employee, it's going to be about three hundred thousand over a two-year period. If you were to get somebody at Mr. Hill's salary, it's going to be about three hundred thousand dollar savings over two years, which is needed because we're over, I believe, more expenses and other expenses during the year. So that's the rationale. Mr. Nelson also mentioned about having two years to report policies and a proper search to take place. But from a financial standpoint, that's the biggest reason here, in addition to she's the best candidate, in my opinion. But that's from a financial standpoint, it's the savings, and he's expecting her back. There's been a lot of positive reviews, so those are some of the reasons that we mentioned.
Well, we don't know what we're going to do yet, but I certainly can't sit up there and think that it's going to take two years to do a superintendent's search.
I'd like to understand the three hundred thousand dollar number for Mr. Hill.
Well, I have a spreadsheet here. Basically, her salary, eighty-four, if she went to ninety-five, that'd be eleven thousand per year. You can get another time bill, a hundred and seventy-five per year with compensation, and we all, and that's, it's three hundred and fifty thousand.
I think the other thing that Pete was trying to also make, may have not said, is that if you do allow Carol Selby to be superintendent, half of her salary will be paid out of Title I, half, half of her salary will be paid out of general fund. Of course, that is a savings for the next couple of years. My concern, we are still in a deficit elimination plan. This is no interest to me. I just want the district to come out of the deficit, is number one. Number two, stability in this district, I am concerned about along with the state. I am going to have to respond to the state on what we're going to do because their concern is the stability of Bridgeport Spalding School District. So that was one of my concerns, not only financially, but stability, stability. My other concern is that we're in a deficit position. I'm not sure anything can happen. We're going to get a qualified person that would want to take on a school district that has a three million dollar deficit, which would be reduced down to maybe close to two million dollars after we finish this school.
Well, first of all, you don't know what's going to fall by candidate. We will get, we haven't done anything yet, and...
My belief is we definitely need to move forward with the Selby and the Sageman. Either a one-year contract, we need to do a superintendent research, as was mentioned here, we need to hire a candidate that is going to be here for a long run. We really need to do our due diligence. I've face-to-face discussed this with Carol, and I definitely think she needs to live that job. And I don't think we need to do this in a month, two months, or three months, but we need to do a contract. My belief is a one-year contract, just like we just did, get it, get it done, and I would like to get it done today if we can. And so we have that stability, which we are starting to get. The cement, after Mr. Hill, when Carol was here, she laid the cement. It was soggy, but it's starting to harden now, we're starting to get good footing. We need to maintain that, but I don't, myself, I think we need a one-year contract, just like we had. It will still save us if we do it again for another one-year renewal, there's no difference, but I definitely think we need to do that one year. Just, I asked to see that, I haven't seen it yet, but it's a very, if I remember, it's a one-page, simple thing. It gives us the stability we need, and then we need to look, not rush to judgment, but take our time and really do a good search and move from there. So that's my thoughts on it. And I agree.
I'm one of the personnel committee members, and we did discuss this in, in committee. And aside from needing to show the stability to the state and whatever funding sources there may be, I think the evidence of the stability is in the audience tonight, and we are turning things around. And if it ain't broke, and I, I got a degree in English, so I know what I'm saying. If it ain't broke, don't fix it. I put my support behind Mrs. Selby.
I also support Carol Selby for the acting superintendent role. The reason I look more at a two-year contract is if we look at the next year, it's, I think it's going to take between six to twelve months to find, um, good candidates for superintendent. So if we're looking at a one-year contract, that means that we need to start immediately looking for a new superintendent, which my understanding is if we go to someone that's very well represented for doing that, like the Michigan Association of School Board search is kind of expensive, and we may not really have the funds right now with that type of a search. So if we expand her interim contract for two years, then we could look at starting that search maybe towards the end of this coming year and give ourselves plenty of time to find a good candidate for that position. And if she, you know, chooses to also apply for that position, it does give her more time to show us what she's capable of doing for this school district. So I, I lay more to a two-year contract. And it's a good savings for the school district, it's the best.
At the root of my concern is academic performance, and we have not seen any statistics for this year yet. And the second issue is our finances. I personally believe that we would be well-served because we could do it, that the best qualified candidate should serve as superintendent, whether that be Miss Selby fine. But at this point in time, we have not vetted her against any potential candidates. And is that really fair? I, clearly, I'm not going to be a very popular guy here, but at the end of the day, our job as a school board is to look out for the best interests of our students. I don't believe your number of Miss Selby, they are way out of line.
No, they're not. Quite frankly, getting some of the hundred thousands is low. If you get someone, you get a viable candidate, it's going to be a hundred and fifty. I have a sheet right here, I can pass up the whole board.
I can use a spreadsheet to say the same thing, too.
These are valid numbers, I have, throw up your CPA, these are valid numbers.
I really believe that we have a search firm that owes us a search. I would like to see that Miss Selby would be a part of this process and go through the vetting, and if she's the candidate of choice, then she would be our superintendent.
They haven't done it in twenty years.
I put my full support behind Miss Selby for several reasons. On one, what our teachers and our staff and our students went through this year was just, unacceptable isn't the word. In every meeting, look out and see your faces, you've stuck together, you brought our kids through it, you helped, you stuck together, and you made it through this year. Unbelievable, what all of you have done. And I watched Carol Selby come in and create stability in this district. She brought more unity, morale picked up, I just, I saw positive change, far fewer complaints than what we were close to getting at the end of the year. I also, when I said it in the personnel meeting, I'll say it again, I've been on this board since August, I've yet to see a strategic planner and goals and objectives for this district. That is not acceptable. And we're a multi-million dollar business in some extent, to some extent, and yet these documents, to my knowledge, don't exist. I don't know how we can possibly go out and look for a superintendent without having some clear goals and objectives on what we want that person to look up. How do you get that done? Major corporations don't search for CEOs because they find the people with the MBAs and five years' experience. They set goals and objectives, and then they go find the person that can help them meet them. We know the world, we have to get that strategic plan in place. That is a twelve, I've been through them in the corporate world, that is a twelve to eighteen-month process. I, in my opinion, we would be foolish to turn this ship any other direction but the direction it's going right now. We need to get that done, and I believe that Carol Selby can lead us through that process.
We had a superintendent's search, and out of the results of that, we hired Mr. Hill. I don't have confidence in the search team and that committee to do their due diligence and to care about what really happens here in Bridgeport. Some of you will recall that midstream, they brought in another candidate, for whatever reason, I'm not sure, we talked with him, I don't know if it was considered an interview or what. This gentleman came in with boots on that were covered with cow dung. That doesn't look like someone that's interested in being a superintendent in our school district for one. And I surmise that he came and stood there as a favor to someone perhaps on that search committee, but it didn't, it didn't do us one bit of good to waste that hour with him. My support again is behind Mrs. Selby for bringing the stability, the pride, and the commitment to our students in this community and in this school.
The search committee owes us a free search. If we don't use it this year, we lose it. And then if we decide next year, or Carol decides next year she don't want to be here, then we have to pay for a new search, where Carol can apply right now during the superintendent search, and we don't lose that one.
Hurricane, Hurricane.
That's not going to happen. There's no audience participation, audience participation is done. I do support Carol, I just have a problem with the two-year contract. I know there is stability, I know we've been moving forward, and I know that's because of you, Carol, and I do support you, I just have an issue with the two-year contract.
What would be the question that you have to guide with the two-year contract?
Well, if we start the search, you know, there has been comment that we already used a certain search firm, and look what they got us. All the search firms are going to do, they're going to do the same thing, they're going to, they're going to advertise, they're going to gather their information, and then they're going to get it to us. So I don't see where any search firm is going to do anything any different than, than the search firm that we've already used. We do have a free search. You know, how do you know you get locked in with two years? How do you know that you're going to search in, in a, in a month? Maybe, maybe somebody's going to apply, that's going to be just incredible. I mean, the best superintendent, that's out there, you don't know that. Then they tie you up, you're locked up with a two-year contract, and you can't move forward because you have Miss Selby, a two-year contract.
My questions would be, Hill came in here with zero experience, never been a superintendent, he got a three-year contract. Who's going to come in and not want at least a two- or three-year contract?
And, and that's a great what-if, particularly based upon what Melissa has said about the funding sources, wanting to see stability, and then the cost, cost savings that we will receive by having Mrs. Selby in that position. And to me, the cost saving, that factor isn't as important as the person that is in the position because she's willing to do it, she's shown, she's proven herself. I'm not saying that she has all of the experience in every area, but what I've seen is that she's willing to do what it takes to keep us afloat and moving us forward. So that's my...
And I did speak with the SAG and the intermediate school district board, just in general, about searches for school superintendents, and there is a difference according to them and their very experience and the people that you hire to do your search. And every one of them, of course, you know, maybe this is just because they are on the school board, but we, the Michigan Association of School Boards, do the most thorough and best searches for superintendents.
Can I propose, Chris and Brown, that it sounds as if there is at least support for a one-year contract, and that the personnel committee be in a position to monitor student performance in the debt. There's nothing that says we can't extend the contract, right?
I, I agree.
But that it would be the sports prerogative to extend it any point in time if Miss Selby was agreeing. It's not that I'm not in support of Miss Selby. The point that I wanted to make was, is that we want to make certain that if she's a superintendent, that we can stand in front of the public and say, she's embedded through the same process that would render somebody else superintendent, but if there's adequate support for her at this table, let's find a meeting.
Are you going to make a motion?
Well, I have a question, Colonel Melissa. If she becomes a full-time superintendent, how can we still use Title I when you can't because she is going to continue to do both titles? Title I as well as one to consultant, she can do that in smaller districts than happens over there. Not full-time.
She, she probably can, but do you, do you really want your superintendent doing, doing both jobs? I, I would like my superintendent to be a superintendent, superintendent only.
She's been doing it.
Well, I know she has, but that's only because of the circumstances why she forgot to enroll with. Mr. Lang, are you going to make a motion?
I move that we extend the contract from Ms. Selby for one year.
Is there support?
Support.
Roll call, Robyn.
Question.
Question, discussion.
Discussion.
I still would like to reiterate that if we're going to do a thorough search for a school superintendent, it's going to take over six months. I'm just looking at Bay City, they go through a search process, I'm a very good person, and it took several months. If we're giving just a one-year contract to Ms. Selby, that means that we need to start immediately with a search for a superintendent. And just as Mr. Nelson just explained, we're not in a position, we don't even have a clear cut goal. We don't even, we haven't seen our strategic plan. We don't have a vision. How can you hire somebody when you don't have those things in place?
Can I answer that? In the past, it's been a superintendent who has led the strategic plan and the goal-setting thing. We brought in, was it MASP, I think, to do the strategic plan under the direction of the superintendent, and they put together a five-year plan, there is, there was a five-year plan put together. What happened to it, I don't know, but there is one.
And, and I'm not arguing that point with you. The point I'm making is that at this point, we haven't seen that, we don't know what the goals are, we don't know where we are in, in reaching those goals. And it is ludicrous to go out and find somebody to lead you when you don't have your goals and plans that's where you want to go. We're not in a position right now. Luckily for us, Ms. Selby was familiar with this school district, the teachers, and, and just where we were at, that she had, she didn't have long learning curves for this, but someone coming in here, not with the background that she has, it, it's almost impossible to ask.
And we're also on the two-year plan for her to get out of deficit. That's why I want to be clear is that through June of 2017, that's, we're going to be in deficit, and those issues are, that, that's our primary goal right now, if Ms. Selby's on board with it. Bring a new superintendent, that, that's going to be a problem, and you're going to have to start off fresh. Again, a viable candidate, you're going to have to be out of deficit first, not a priority school first, where you have a viable candidate, that is a problem.
There's a motion on the floor, it's been supported. Motion by Bob, supported by Larry, for a one-year contract for Ms. Selby. Roll call, vote please.
Mr. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Mrs. Morris?
No.
Mr. Nelson?
No.
Mrs. Sageman?
Yes.
And Mr. Allen?
No.
So, well, me?
Mr. Brown?
No. I, I'm voting for the one-year contract, so I'm supporting the one-year, I'm sorry.
Yes. 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 Next order of business.
We have, we have secretary issues, we have contracts, one is Ms. Byer, who I understand is retiring in August, and the other one is for Ms. Johnson. Contracts are as follows, board members. Ms. Byer's salary, I assume there's no salary raise here, this is a current salary that she's receiving?
Right.
Fifty thousand, five hundred ninety-seven dollars. And this contract would be through July thirty-first, assuming August thirty-first. Is there discussion?
Was that the salary she made in twenty-fourteen, fifteen?
Yes.
Yeah, what she made in thirteen, fourteen?
I have no idea. I understood, the reason why, that particular contract brought to the board, not Mr. Hill, because the human resources position was totally eliminated, and we combined jobs. So the position of the human resources secretary was totally eliminated, and the duties were divided between Ms. Byer and Ms. Johnson. That was, when I asked a question, that's what I was told. And so that's the contract that came before the board last year. However, the person probably going into Ms. Byer's position will probably have a lower position, because that position is based on experience and a lot of.
You have a new person coming in here at thirty-eight something, don't you, instead of?
Tried to find someone.
Yes.
Board members, my, my opinion on, on this was, if Ms. Byer is retiring August thirty-first, why do we have to offer a two, a two-month contract? Why can't we just continue to pay her? We've got contracts all over this school. Why do we need a two-month contract?
From a, if I may address the board, from a business standpoint, one of the differences between Ms. Byer and Ms. Johnson, they are not on a secretary's contract, so they don't have representation. And so just to say, well, we'll just keep paying her for two months, that's fine, but if something, you decide for whatever reason that you're not going to pay her, there's no contract.
Why, why do you need representation? I, I have no representation in my job, I'm an at-home employee, I don't hold a contract in my job. I don't understand why every time there's got to be contracts, contracts, contracts. We've got more contracts out here in the school than you people could ever imagine.
Well, that's the contract you were presenting last year, that's why you had the issue.
Well, I had the issue with the last year also.
Okay, that's the only reason.
I, I don't, I don't understand it.
Because in the past, I believe, I believe in the past, when I was your superintendent, and all the contracts weren't part of it.
What would your pro-rated sick days be? I appreciate that one is a twelve per year.
That's a same exact.
But it's only just made here, July through August thirty-third.
That's a same exact contract to the two days between.
Do you live in that past?
Yep.
Yeah. And I don't know what her pro-rated sick days would be, our sick days are loaded July one, and they're based on the previous year. So she's earned sick days. She's earned her twenty based on her work at thirteen, fourteen.
Vacation days are sick.
Fourteen, vacation.
Vacation.
Five. Sick days.
So is she going to take twenty vacation days between now and August?
No, she is not.
She's going to, yeah, with August, she's going to want twenty.
We're going to pair her.
No. This contract doesn't allow us to give pay for additions, it's a use it or lose it. That's the difference, actually, that is the difference between last year's contract and every other executive assistant that is working this, is that they got paid for vacation that they didn't use. And starting last year, Mr. Hill eliminated that option for us. So it doesn't make any difference how much vacation I accumulate, if I don't use another, now that the sick day, as it indicates, is similar to steelworkers' secretaries, in fact, it's probably the same way. Because these positions have always followed steelworker's rank. So she has earned twenty vacation days because she worked all of these past four years. So yes, she may take a few days between now and August thirty-one.
The reality is, this is to get her, because the contract technically expires this year to get her through to a debt. That would make the motion, I would accept, the contract that's proposed, extend it to August.
Support. Motion by Pat, supported by Reverend. Roll call, please. Are we, is there any discussion?
I'd like to see, go back to the finance committee to discuss it further, because it was just handed to us this week, and nobody's really had a chance to discuss it.
Please keep in mind that the contract that being, you're being asked to renew is that, and contract for last year, no addition. And if there's any questions about the four thousand dollars that was added last year, that's because they, folks, Robyn, and given additional responsibilities, HR, because, you know, we have no HR generals, we have no HR directors.
And he also took my, our longevity away. He reduced us back to our base and then added four thousand, because that was our concession last year, was to get nobody longevity, not they, but.
This was actually seen, of course, in the chair.
Mrs. Riddle, plus the HR specialists, became a board at the end of January. And, and.
Mr. Nelson, would you be willing to amend your motion to include Ms. Johnson's vote?
Absolutely. I'm happy to amend my motion to incorporate Ms. Johnson's contract again, as well.
Support. Department, was there support, Reverend, to support that? Who would support it? Roll call.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Mrs. Morris?
Yes.
Mr. Nelson?
Yes.
Mrs. Sageman?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Lang?
Yes.
And Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Next order of business, board members, I requested Ms. Selby's presence tonight to give us an update on her department. Ms. Selby, you're up.
Good evening, I am Regina Selby, Coordinator of Professional Learning and Data. I am presenting the effects of our district receiving Title II funds from the state, funds that approve professional learning for all staff, district-wide, and Title I funds for at-risk students to improve learning and teachers to improve their teaching. If our district succumbs to the motto, "All talk and no action," then we can expect a slow rate of transformation, we can expect a slow rate of achievement, we can expect a slow rate of positive culture and climate. However, I suspect that over the next few years, our district will hear action verbs consistently: transform, turn around, prioritize, and redesign. If we hear them consistently, we must feel compelled to take action. Not only will we hear these action verbs for the next four years, we will be required to embed them in every decision that we make. Tonight, I am speaking to you confidently to inform you, the Board of Education, that we began embedding these pertinent action verbs: transform, turn around, prioritize, and redesign immediately. We have taken action, we have taken some great action. Some staff more effectively, some staff more efficiently, and even some staff more hesitantly. But let me inform you tonight, all staff here has taken some type of action. Our teaching staff has already begun a four-year journey, or maybe you could even identify it as a commitment with rigor and relevance. Two powerful words related to our world as educators: rigor and relevance. In our world, you need to understand, experts, administrators, consultants, directors, superintendents, coordinators, and facilitators adamantly will express the necessity that we, educators, must teach and perform with rigor and relevance. They recite it to us, they reiterate to us, reiterate it to us, they demand it from us, and they even evaluate it against us. Despite the trauma of this past school year, with all its negative media attention, lack of stable leadership, and a significant loss of synergy in this district, the teachers of this district displayed rigor and relevance to the best of their abilities. They very honorably took action despite all of the talk. Here's the proof. Teachers in this district analyzed data to create a transformation redesign plan. They adjusted their instruction based on analysis of formative assessments. They interpreted FIM data and mathematics to improve math instruction. They formulated an ILC at Atkins Elementary to improve strategic practices. They selected professional learning opportunities related to their teaching and student learning. They demonstrated sheer patience in the face of adversity in administering the new Michigan M-Step assessment. They defended the need for high school to reinstate the academic interventions enrichment, moving towards a one-hour launch next year. They designed new master schedules. They proposed resources to use to supplement their core curriculum. They differentiated teaching for students lacking proficiency and skills. They argued with us that positive school culture and climate is the key to academic success. They examined our current policies, and they support change. They prioritized positive behavior and interventions, and even provided incentives. They modified family engagement nights to include Title I teaching activities. They compared their skills to rubrics that the transformation demanded they do. They justified their teaching in a survey of enacted curriculum. They revised learning goals in the high school for students to achieve, increase their achievement. They compared and contrasted data to provide us school improvement plans, and they recommended topics for PLCs. If you were in our teaching world, you would understand that transformation in this district includes more, a tremendous amount more of action verbs beyond the ones that I just identified by the Department of Education. Feel confident tonight as community members and board members that we are teaching with rigor and relevance. I will admit, we can always improve our effectiveness, but sometimes you have to look at the whole puzzle before we put together the pieces. Sometimes you have to be willing to learn from others. Sometimes you have to have an open mind. Regardless of the causes for all of these failures, the reasons for our academic gaps, the wrong choices that we made this past school year, Bridgeport's fallen community schools are taking positive steps towards positive action through increasing our professional learning opportunities, increasing our professional collaboration, and increasing our professional responsibilities with rigor and with relevance. I presented tonight the board with several handouts, actually, a very lengthy document that's ten pages, identifying data and professional learning experiences from the second semester. It would definitely take me too long to go through. I ask that you please review. I ask that you please review this with a positive attitude and with much appreciation. Review this document with rigor and review it with relevance. Teachers took action all year. We are taking more action over the summer to increase our knowledge and skills. School has stopped momentarily with students, but our commitment to improve this district has it. Thank you.
Board members, have any questions for Ms. Sylvie?
Ms. Sylvie, I have a couple of comments. First of all, I would like to congratulate you for an excellent job of providing, helping to provide this professional development. And I am especially grateful that you did work with the differentiated teaching methods. I know that's very important. And also with cultural proficiency, could you tell me some of the things that most doesn't matter?
Well, when we had P L Cs, we did the framework for, understanding the framework for poverty. We brought in SAG-Aid ISD Rebecca Orneck and Erin Sinkowski, and they talked to the staff about working with students in conflict. So we did most of the culture and climate through P L Cs. But we also, if you look in your handout, we received the Promoting Positive School Climate Grant, which is actually a three-year grant for Bridgeport, and we will receive the assistance of the state and assistance of the SAG-Aid ISD to improve the culture and climate for staff and students.
Ms. Sylvie, I know there, this week, there've been some ISD monitors here. Will they be putting a report together of their findings, you know?
They usually provide feedback to Ms. Sylvie or myself, and if you want, that we can.
On paper? On paper. Could you make sure that the Board gets that?
Yes, I will.
Thank you. Thank you all so much.
I'd, I'd just like to say, I had an opportunity, I'm trying to, I had an opportunity to speak with Ms. Sylvie, Sylvie, uh, maybe after a school function, I really had an opportunity to understand much better what she's doing in our district. And if you had that opportunity, I would encourage you to have that conversation. While your report is wonderful, I don't think you've really done yourself justice with the times and things that you're doing to help our children in this district. So I wanted personally to say thank you for spending time with me, educating, and thanks for the way you're handling this.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Thank you. Love your work.
Thank you.
Next order of business, Mr. Barlow was going to put on a presentation, college and career scholarship update. He had family emergency, he had to leave. I advised him we would put up.
An outstanding educator, and has done a wonderful job this year. And this is her first time doing this on the level that she's done it. And I think I've been in awe of her performance this year, and I think she's been a tremendous asset to the staff, at least I hope they think that, I'm pretty sure that they do. And I look forward to her continuing her work next year with the entire staff, bringing us up to the standards of other school districts in this area. So thank you, Ms. Sylvie. Ms. Sylvie, regarding the M H S A A resolution, and this is apparently a standard resolution that we have to, the Board has to approve every year, and it's just to continue our membership in the Michigan High School Athletic Association, and of course, it's just for the high school only. Oh, I'm sorry, middle school, excuse me.
Atkins and High School.
I'd like to make the motion that we continue to work with M H S A A membership.
More motion, is there support? More motion by Ms. Sager, supported by Mr. Nelson. Roll call, both please.
Mrs. Morris?
Yes.
Mr. Nelson?
Yes.
Mrs. Sager?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
And Mr. Brooks?
Yes.
Next order of business, pending the bills, minutes from the, excuse me, minutes from the May eleventh, twenty fifteen, business meeting, May twentieth, twenty fifteen, special meeting, and the personnel report. Need a motion? Take this out. Motion by Mr. Long, is there support? Support. Motion by Larry, supported by Mr. Nelson. Roll call, please.
Mr. Nelson also has transfer on, and then you hear Mr. Long say.
Yes. Roll call, Rob.
Mrs. Sager?
No.
Yes.
Mr. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Mrs. Morris?
Yes.
Mr. Nelson?
Yes.
And Mr. Brooks?
Yes.
Next order of business, School Resource Officer contract for twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen.
Can I make the motion that we can continue the School Resource Officer contract for twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen?
Support. By Larry, support by Larry. Roll call.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Mrs. Morris?
Yes.
Mr. Nelson?
Yes.
Mrs. Sager?
Yes.
And Mr. Brooks?
Yes.
Next order of business, Board and Superintendent comments. Mr. Lang?
Thank you. As we, most, well, most of us were at high school graduation, and I would like to commend the staff. It was the quickest graduation I had done in my district. Thank you for getting it done before the rain. I'd also like to, again, reiterate the focus that we've had as a lab recognizing our students. I was here for the middle school, a recognition, and a very positive experience, very well done, even with the technical difficulties, it still went off well, and I think focusing on our kids and what they're doing well is a great thing, and it was a Vanessa, excuse me, keep it up. To the teachers, thank you for a year that may have ended well, to start out with, but I am excited about the things that we have coming up with upcoming school year. And it's not very often that I say things like this, but I would like for us to begin to focus on what lies ahead, and that we can't change where we've been, and so we can't let it define us. We need to rise above what it is that we've experienced, and put it behind us and move forward to the good of our children in this community. So we all know we had a tough year. Let's put it behind us, let's move on, because our kids are dependent on us, so thank you.
That kind of segues into the comments I wanted to make. The young man that came for us, I'm sorry, I didn't get your name, but you mentioned some of the things that you had observed that weren't quite where they should be, and steps need to be taken, was your request, to better this school district, and I think we all agree to that. One of my problems since I have been on the school board is I'm probably not your typical type A person, I'm more likely type B person, and I've gotta see the vision to, to exactly know where I'm going. And I know that is just how the world is. You can't go out and play football on the football field and you don't know where the goal is, you know? And I look at this the same way. We do know we have problems, but really, what is our goal? Is it to create STEM, STEM education, or is it vocational education? In what way are we going to put all of our energies to, to better our school district? So we do need a strategic plan, a vision, and we need goals. And the school board needs to get together. I don't really care what you call it, a retreat, a workshop, another school board meeting, but we need to look, we need to dig out our strategic plan and see where we are with it, and, and that's my recommendation. And I hope that as a school board, you take the time before, before July to get this done, because Ms. Sylvie has already said she's going to have a new summary met July. I would imagine it's going to require some time to recover, so she needs to be involved with this. So I think we need to make time to at least revisit what our vision is and to have some practical goals for the next school year.
To go off of what Bob and Tanya said, a lot has happened this year, and we all survived it, but we did it because of you. Had you not come together, not stood up for your students, where would they be today? So we can sit up here and we can pass resolutions or agree to pay a bill, but without all of you in front of apples, student success is dependent on your hard work. So I'm looking forward to next year, there's a lot of exciting things going on between break season, STEM, sort of technology upgrades, and there's a lot of positive things in this district. So I'm looking forward to next year, I agree with Tanya, that this board needs to come together and start talking about some goals and objectives and strategic plan, then can involve all of you, as they should, and thank you all very much, and look forward to next year.
One of the things that I know about sitting here is that I serve at the pleasure of the community in which I serve, and I want to always be cognizant of that, so that whatever point that I cease to be productive, cease to show a commitment, cease to show true dedication to the students, to the children in this district, and then to the employees of the schools in this district, that I will have the courage to remove myself from the board before I mask. I serve at your pleasure, and I want to do the very best that I can for all of our children. I don't have children in the district. I don't have grandchildren in the district. They're not even in the state. But I do believe that I have something to offer, something to share, and I want to continue to do that. But I want to do that as long as I can do it with the confidence of you, the constituency of this community. Thank you.
Wow, what, what a year we finished up here just recently, with the culmination at the high school, the excitement in the students' eyes, and we're done with that. We have to learn from our mistakes. If we're not learning from them, we're really, we're human. We learn from them, we move forward. I just want to let Ms. Sylvie know that my vote of a one-year contract is, is nothing negative. She and I have had a discussion about it, so I think it's a good thing. We've had that discussion, I think we're on the same page, and we are going in the right direction. We have to continue that way. That's all I have.
I'd like to thank all the students and the staff that worked hard on the graduation. I know a lot of them worked really hard all day long, and so happy that we did get out of there before we got to downpour. I've also had the opportunity, thanks to President Brons, to work with Mrs. Sylvie, Mrs. Silva, and Mrs. Duran on the priority, and I was very impressed with the meeting that we had today and the things that were discussed. Keep up the good work, because we really need those types of things. And one of the things that I discussed with them today, we talked about bringing back our athletes to measure our elementary kids, which made a big difference not only to our elementary kids, but to our athletes when we used to do it. So, and also I got a Facebook message from Chris Dolinsky, one of our former graduates. He does the technology classes out to Delta, out to Alma College, he's on the school board at Mount Rose. He just got Mount Rose two students, interns, for a hundred hours apiece, and he said if we would like to get ahold of him, that he knows of other ones that are available, that we could probably get him here. So that's all I can say.
Well, we made it through graduation, thanks to the teachers, and I know Mr. Long thinks you last month, you got the kids there because of your hard work and dedication. Don't think for one minute, I don't know how it went this year, I've been here, I know, but we are moving forward, and I also would like to echo what Larry said, Carol, I do have support in you, and I do think you're doing a good job, and I know we are stable and we are moving forward. So we have my support. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Brons. I want to congratulate our staff and students for another productive year, and I know, just like others have stated, that it started out very rocky, and it looked like it was gonna be rocky the entire year, but I'm hoping that you are feeling, because I'm feeling that it's a little calmer now, and I promise, because it looks like I'll be with you at least for another year, that I will try to keep the waters as calm as possible. I do love Bridgeport, this is where I started my teaching career, and this is where I'd like to retire from, not anytime soon, but at some point. And I would like to also thank the Board for their support throughout the year, and hopefully we continue support. Ready up? That's it.
Carol.